All right, good evening. It is 5:00 PM September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty five. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Argyle ISD Board of Trustees. At this time we will determine if a quorum is present.
Leona McDade present.
Josh Westrum present.
Rich McDowell present.
Leanne Arthel present.
Matt Sleeton present.
Hi, Sam Slayton present. We do have a quorum established. The time remains five PM, actually five oh one PM now, and we are going to adjourn to executive session.
Thank you for joining us today.
Alright, good evening. Time's 6:06 PM. We have returned from executive session. This time we're gonna have our friends from Argyle West Elementary come lead us in our prayers. Ms. Hayden, you want...
It's pledges.
Oh, pledges, not prayers, I'm sorry.
We'll lead back to you.
We'll do it all.
It was an alliteration, I'm sorry. Anyway, Ms. Hayden, would you like to introduce?
Absolutely. Well, we have Argyle West here. We have pre-K through fifth grade. And we just kind of have a mixed variety of all so that you guys can see who's representing our school. So if you guys wanna come line up? Do you wanna line up right here?
Someday we'll get a little soapbox stand. We got one. Oh my gosh, look at that.
Remember you're sharing your name, grade, and what you love about Argyle West, okay?
Hello, my name is Avery Quast and I am in fifth grade. And what I love about Argyle West is how nice the teachers are there.
My name is Rhett and I'm in third grade. And what I love about Argyle West is that we have very nice teachers and specials teachers.
My name is Evie Bingham and what I love about Argyle West is the teachers.
My name is Finn Miller. I'm in fifth grade and what I like the most about fifth, I mean, Argyle West is the teachers and they make learning fun.
My name is Victor. Are you 3K?
And what do you like about, what do you like the most?
Playing with my friends.
Good job! Good job, Matthew.
I'm Jacob Smith, in fifth grade, and what I like best about Argyle West is the community. How everyone is very kind and always willing to help.
My name is Delton Richardson, and I'm in fifth grade, and what I love most about Argyle West is that all the teachers help you, and that they're ready to teach you about like what's next.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kaylee Davis, and I'm in fourth grade. And I knew to Argyle West, and I came in January. And the best things I love about Argyle West is that I love, I, I like all the country accents, and I like P E.
Tell you what, we've got those country accents down here. Good job.
My name's Gemma. I'm in th- I'm in third grade. And the thing that I like about Argyle West is everyone's nice and will give a hand to help.
My name is Rhett. I'm in third grade, and what I love about Argyle West is the teachers.
Hi, my name is Liam Macdon, and I'm in fifth grade at Argyle West Elementary. I just wanna say thank you to Ms. Hayden for giving me an opportunity being student council and representing, and to be here at this board council. The reason why I like it is because our teachers are so helpful and helping us guide through, and Ar- Argyle West is giving us lots of opportunities.
Excellent job, sir. Thank you.
My name is, my name is Ryan. I go to Argyle West, and my favorite thing about it is horizons.
You ready? Yeah, great job, Ryan.
All right, now we'll have our opening prayer. Dear Father God, thank you for the opportunity to serve this district. Lord, I pray that it be on our hearts to use discernment and wisdom. And Lord, let every decision that this board, administration, this community, just be focused on serving our children, serving them well, and being good representatives and models of the power of education, Lord, and being good citizens. Lord, again, we thank you for the opportunity to serve, and we pray for healing. In the Saviour's Son's holy name we pray. Amen. All right. Byvaline, if we have anything? Awesome. All right. Okay, we'll go to the consent agenda. And donations for the screen went out. September 2025 donations, A B C fiscal year 2025, number 27, $925 for football, sign and locker tags. A B C fiscal year 2025, number 28, $4,646.60 for softball uniforms. Total September donations, $5,571.60. Right, point zero zero, right Liz? We're, we're taking it out further. That is true fiscal responsibility. You've got it rounded to the thousands. Let's go. All right. Does anyone have any questions about any of the consent items?
I do, actually. With softball uniforms, I mean, I take it the district will buy uniforms, but then Booster Club will step in in all the sports at times and
And supplement, yes.
And supplement with a second uniform or
That's correct.
Update the uniforms, which is just to point out, it's a nice, nice little thing for the district to have that.
Yes, for sure. Yes, the Booster Club does quite a few donations, and they support all sports.
All right. Any other questions on the consent items? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent items as presented. Dr. McDavid, motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. McDowell with a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. All right, construction. Mr. Cohen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so here on this photo, we're looking at the visitor's side. We've got the fencing done outside. We've got the brick columns in between. You can see we've got the canopy installed. That's where we'll be, I would say, taking tickets. I don't think they do that anymore. Scanning tickets or whatever they do. The visitor will come in through that side. You can also see, and there'll be better photos here in a minute, but you can see the press box as well in this photo. We've got all the glass in the front of that now. This is another shot, looking at the other side of our visitors' grandstands. You can also see here in the foreground, the video board structure is up. Got all the electrical boxes set, and I believe LED panels will be starting maybe this week or next going in, so it'll start to look like a video board at that point. This photo, you can see indoor activity center. They have got the masonry, the block up all the way around. They're working on the veneer, stone, and brick now. You can't see it in this photo, but they've completed the south side, and they're working currently on the east side. So we're trying to get that and the north side complete to hopefully open up this drive again very soon.
Jeff, I have a question.
Yes.
I had a couple of parents reach out to me since our last board meeting. I referred them to the previous board meeting, and we talked about it, but I just wanna bring it up again. So the traffic flow pattern, when the fencing is removed, that's been altered to where there is this turn here.
We, we have a very awkward turn.
Very awkward turn.
Currently, yes.
Is, I know there's a curb that's been put in right there. Is that curb going to be removed to open this drive again, or?
No, that has not been planned to be opened again.
Do you have something to show in a minute?
I, I do have a detailed graphic of all of this, if you wanna come back to that at the end. Yes. I was asked to prepare something, so.
I just don't wanna, you know, I don't wanna get yelled at.
I understand. So we can go through that in depth here just momentarily.
Thank you.
Here, we're on the home side, looking south at the press box. It's easy to see from this angle, the glass that's going in. And it looks like there's some glass missing there in the center up top. That's actually our film deck. So that's why you don't see any glass right there. In the foreground, we've got one of the concession stands. The roof is on in this photo. They're working on gutters and trim and canopies that go around to cover the doorways. The little green generator you see here in the foreground, that's something we brought in at the beginning of school, so we've actually hooked up our must-go lights to that, which is how they're able to practice in the morning. They come on, they just flip one switch. Lights come on, they're done, they flip it off. So that's how we've been able to provide light during this interim until we get all the permanent power installed. Closer shot of the press box and the activity going on there. I haven't counted the lifts, but there's anywhere from five to seven at any given time working on this, which has helped speed up the progress. I know it may still seem slow, but the other option would have been scaffolding, which they sometimes do that way, and it would have probably taken much longer to complete, so. But here, you can see, if you look closely at the base of the press box and the structure, you can see some masonry scaffolding, and they're actually bringing the brick up on those outside wide columns, if you wanna call them that. Much closer up shot. Here on the end, where you, where you just see the structural steel grid there, that's actually gonna be a perforated metal panel is our finish. So you'll kinda still be able to see that structure and that stair through that perforated metal, but not, you know, not as obvious as it is here. And then everything you see with the yellow sheathing on there, that will all be a metal panel. I think we've got a couple of different systems going on to give it a little bit of variation. This angle from the front, also looking down, you can see they're working on the roof. Got all of our wood blocking installed on there, getting ready to install insulation and then roof that. So once we get that complete, the press box will be in the dry. I'm gonna go back to this one. If you look kinda past that on the ground, you can see the, the left and right ends of the canopy on the visitors', I mean, home side. We don't have a shot from that in this presentation, but they've got that completely installed now. It's ready for roofing, and the concrete will be poured underneath there. Work that's coming up will be the LED panels on our video board. That should be starting very soon. Our home grandstand installation has started. So they've got, I believe, most of the structural steel components in. We'll be seeing them start working on aluminum very soon. Press box will be dried in, so they'll be able to start interior finishes in the next month. And then the metal panels, we'll see those starting to go in on the concession stands and on the press box, actually. Yes?
Crazy question. On one of the pictures that you had earlier, I was looking at the distance between the uprights and the video board. And thinking about where we are now in our current stadium, and the band on the outside of the track, and when those field goal or extra point balls go over, they, they pretty much just go over the, those backstands. So I'm assuming we're far enough away?
Uh, yes. I, I don't think currently the plan is to set the bleachers up in the end zone.
Right, but even without, I'm just asking.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
As far as the distance.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I know that's something you would have already talked about, but it's just that the visual on that was
Right. Just a bad angle.
An angle, yeah.
And this is just our milestone tracking. We're still, Pope is really pushing to get it substantially complete by the end of November. I know we, we have some weather days built in there, but, but they're working hard, and they're keeping their schedule updated, and they feel like they're still gonna be able to deliver that by about the end of November. And I believe the indoor activity center is tracking about a month behind that currently. So I'll go through the middle school update, and then we'll come back to the, the parking lot slides that I have. That's a separate presentation. So here, just looking at a, a side of the shite, shot, shot of the side. Cannot talk tonight. From 407 angle. So we're working on spreading all the topsoil. That's the darker earth you see in the photo, the darker brown color. So we're re-spreading the topsoil that we strip, getting ready to plant grass. You can see trees along the frontage are already installed. Tennis courts are the two concrete slabs you see on the left. And it's kinda hard to see, but they've actually started the fencing in this photo. You can see some metal poles around the edge of that tennis court, so that's our tennis fencing. In this shot, we're looking north toward the classroom wing of the middle school itself. So this is forming the courtyard. Classrooms will surround it on three sides, front right and, and the back in this photo. And they are currently finishing up the steel erection in the, the center portion to connect the north and south wings there. In this shot, we're looking down kinda the main, the main spine, if you will, from the front toward the back. So you can see what looks like some white steel beams here. That's actually a glue laminated wood beam, engineered wood beam. So that's just a plastic to keep the weather off of it till we get the roof on there. But that corridor, that'll be the main corridor that goes from front to back. The admin offices are dead center in this photo. That's where all the administration is. Behind that, you have the library, followed by the cafeteria, and then the kitchen. And this is just a little closer shot. This one's looking in reverse from north to south down that main spine. In this photo, you can see we've got roofing being installed, so we've got areas that's starting to get dried in, so we can start working on interior sheet rock, followed by paint and finishes. Another shot just showing the progress of steel erection. Masonry is also continuing on around the building. That's the scaffolding you can see set up here. That masonry will continue on around following the structural steel. Just an overall shot of the entire site. It catches probably 47 out of the 50 acres in this one shot. And here, you can see we've already got grass and trees planted around the perimeter. So we won't have that to do in the end. It's a very good time to be planting right now, too, so. Kind of the ideal time for this. And maintenance of that, in case anyone's wondering, is on the contractor until they're done. So I'm not paying that water bill, if anyone should ask. Or mowing. Not doing that.
But I mean, just so we're clear, that, those, that landscape is a requirement of the town.
Yes.
It's not, it wasn't like we said, hey, let's go plant all these beautiful trees and put in these amazing, you know.
Correct.
It's, it's a, it's a
We, we love trees, but it is a requirement of the town, and we didn't plant a bunch of extra trees.
Yeah.
But it's always easier when we're coming up to the, the end of a project, and we wanna get our CO when we have green grass and green trees and versus, a lot of times, you don't have those, and then you gotta ask for special permission, and so we won't have that issue here when we go to get our CO. So on our look ahead, we should have bleachers, which we only have on one side of this field. On the home side, we'll see those start going in. We are looking at, I believe, October the 9th or 10th. I'll have to confirm that. To set the rooftop units, they're gonna do it by helicopter, if anybody's interested. That's the plan. Weather permitting, of course. We should be working on getting our permanent gas and electric connections to the building. So once we get that, get our units hooked up, we'll have heat and/or air, depending on temperatures, which will help with the finishes, so we're not fighting that or having to provide temporary heat or air. And then we're gonna start working, hopefully, very soon, on site preparations for elementary number five. And then just a reminder of our milestones. Nothing here has really changed, and we're still on track for substantial completion in July. But I'd say, once we, we get rooftops on and roof dried in, we're gonna really make a push and see if we can bring this in a little bit early and get furniture a little sooner. Are there any other questions on middle school?
No.
All right. Pull up the special presentation. All right, so what I got here, I went ahead and, and showed what it was previous. That's on the top. On the bottom is what it currently looks like under construction, because we do have a construction fence up, which is preventing full access that we'll have in the end. So in the top graphic, you can see we had two driveways. Both would exit the parking lot. parking lot towards that, I'll call it a Y-shaped intersection. And because the angle coming out of the bottom drive there, it wasn't straight to the end, and then a left, full-left turn, it's more like a left curve, it wasn't the safest corner. And so that's one of the reasons we came up with the modifications to the parking lot, which reduced that to a single point in and out of the parking lot. But we currently, due to construction, needing to get the veneer on the north side of the indoor activity center, we've closed down that lane and that first row of parking on the other side of it, so that allow that construction to happen. So as soon as we can get that done, we'll be able to take that fence down, which will open up that drive again. So the construction fence in the bottom graphic here is represented by the blue line with the circles. So that's currently where we have construction fence set up. So when everybody enters, goes to enter that parking lot, it's forcing them all to do a U-turn to get into that first drive aisle. And then, of course, leaving, it's the opposite U-turn currently. So this is what it will look like, hopefully, in the next month, but definitely when construction's over. This is the intent of that, where we have one way in and out of the parking lot with the ability to go straight in, and then also still make that U-turn for those that want to get into that first drive aisle. But once this is opened up, where that is an option, I think it will relieve and ease a lot of the current difficulties that we're having right now.
Awesome.
So that's the plan.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll let you know to hear.
Absolutely. If you think of questions later, please send them my way.
I'm good.
I have them in there. I'll show them to you, just in case. I also threw in photos of the same thing, because I know some people may not read plans as well, and a picture can speak a lot better to a lot of people. So I just wanted to throw that in there, too. I forgot about that. So on the left is our future configuration, so I know the construction fence is still up in this photo, if you look really close, but don't look that close. This is what the entrance will look like to the parking lot.
Yeah.
On the right, I was able to turn my Google Maps on my phone into 3D and snapshot that to get that. It's the only way I could get close to the same angle. And you can see what we had before the project. And so that'll show you the two drives as they exited, and there was no stop sign or anything from the drive to your left in that picture. And so people would roll right out of there, but they were hard to see for the people coming down the other aisle sometimes. And so that's the reason it got redesigned the way it is currently.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's good.
Thank you.
So he's got some slides. Kind of give you all some visuals as I talk through superintendent report tonight. So we do have some celebrations. So we've got some student celebrations here to share. Obviously, we had homecoming this past week. Great event. Community, again, just blew it out of the water, being here on the parade. We had thirty-three floats last year, and Mr. Haron, how many floats did we have last Wednesday night?
Sixty-six.
Sixty-six floats. I think the, I think we lapped the parade, because when we got back over there, the football team was still in the parking lot waiting to leave. So great turnout for the homecoming parade. And then the carnival, of course, was great. We had the way it was set up, lots of room to flow out there, but just great organization. So thank you to everyone. Congratulations to Sager, Sager Zams Allen Scholar-Wen, our homecoming king and queen this year. And I think Sager's sister won it two years ago. Is that, is that like its brother? Yeah, so.
That's true.
I know it. Excellent there. And then we had, let's see, oh, we also had our national merit semifinalists announced in the bottom left corner there. So we had three this year. Last year, we had one. This year, we have three, so that's exciting. We have Leah Chau there on the left. We have Sri Abhinav Thautanfarthi there in the middle. And then we had Riley Pazana there on the far right. So congratulations. Just to put that in perspective, we have, there are sixteen thousand seniors in the United States that actually are named. That's less than one percent of all high school seniors. So very prestigious nomination there, and they'll be looking forward to completing the process for national merit finalists come in the spring. We also have volleyball going on here. We've, in fact, the girls are playing at Collegial Heritage tonight, so I think that's where Ms. Knowles is. Is that, oh, you're right there. They're at home tonight.
Yeah, they're here.
Why did I think they were over there?
That's it, that I was going.
So you confused me. Okay, all right. Okay, so they're here. Okay, very good. So they're playing Collegial Heritage. They won their district opener last week. Football won district opener last Friday night. I think the girls are ranked seventh right now, or fourteenth. No, wait, the girls are ranked ninth, boys are ranked seventh in football, and then tennis is ranked fourteenth. So continuing along with fall sports there. Top right corner, I just want to celebrate tacos with transportation. Jane Rusman Elementary staff celebrated our transportation department last Friday morning and invited them all out. I think Mr. Bale, did y'all take them on a bus?
We did.
You did. So took all the bus drivers out on a bus to JRE, and they had breakfast for them. So wanted to thank our JRE staff out there and our students for welcoming our bus drivers. I know they loved it, so it's a big deal. And then if you happen to see, if you'll go back, sorry, I hadn't talked about Gretchen yet. Gretchen, Command Sergeant Major Gretchen Evans and her husband Bob, they are, have our Silver Eagles. They live in Harvest, and they were part of the Building Homes for Heroes, four hundred thirty-third home dedication last Thursday in Harvest. And that's partnership of Hillwood, which is Ross Perot Jr. He was there and spoke on their behalf. And that is a mortgage-free home to Gretchen and her husband. So we were honored to have a part of that. We had our band, Majestics, Cheer, Football. It was an incredible event commemorative, especially being on September eleventh. So appreciate everyone's participation in that. And Gretchen and Bob are like family to us. I think they've opened, you know, the door to that, and will continue to be a part of this district. So we're very proud to have them involved with us. Another celebration, wanted to recognize Officer Brandon St. John. So he has been selected for the Texas Association Against Sexual Assault Conference. It only accepts a hundred officers statewide. It's a very big deal, very competitive application process, so just wanted to recognize Officer St. John for being selected. Speaks a lot of his professionalism, but also the reputation of our PD department. So congratulations to him. And then we also have just some updates, district updates. I know everybody always likes to know what our enrollment numbers are and our class size ratios. Enrollment numbers, we projected to be at sixty-five eighty-four at the end of October, and we are right now at sixty-five thirty-four, so we're just fifty students shy of that. You can kind of see there where we're over and where we're under as far as our October projections, right there in the difference from snapshot. And then our class size ratio are such a relief compared to this time last year. Again, thank you to our Board of Trustees. Thank you to all of our staff who named that as a priority. For those that do not know or have forgotten, the Board approved three point six million dollars in additional teaching positions, which was fifty new classroom teachers to help with our class size ratios. And I don't know that you would find class sizes like that anywhere at a public school around us right now. So very proud of that. I know our teachers are very appreciative and have been talking about that, even all the way up to the high school, about how their classrooms, they feel the relief this year. So just wanted to point that out. And then just from district and community updates, the Senate Bill twelve parental rights, that was all due September first. Our website, it's linked to the district homepage. So for all of our parents that haven't seen that, it is there with all the required documents and the resolution the Board adopted in August. Also, House Bill fifteen twenty-two had some new requirements for school board meetings. Most of it, we were already doing as a practice, a best practice here in Argyle. The different, the one we are having to do differently is we have to post our agendas now three business days before the date of the meeting. So in the past, it's always been seventy-two hours, meaning Friday at five o'clock. Those agendas now are being posted by Tuesday for a Monday meeting, the Tuesday week before. So that's a new requirement, just, you know, for us as administration, just working through those timelines. It's a little bit different, but we will get used to that and get in a routine. So that's new. Wanted to make sure everyone knew that those requirements are now there. And then we also have a new staff-led podcast dropping next week. It's called An Eagle's Eye on Texas Education Policy. Super excited and very proud of Stephen Orlovsky from the high school. We also have Maddie Fairchild, a teacher at South, and then Principal Katie Hayden, who you all saw earlier, from West Elementary. And they have really become our advocates from a ground-level voice there with our representatives. And so they have taken this and run with it. They have an Instagram, and now they have a Facebook page, and they will be dropping their first podcast next week. And they will have some guest teachers and students on there over the course of the year, but really just gearing us up for the ninetieth session, which will be starting a year from January, if you can believe that. So very proud of them and the work that they're doing, making a difference. And then our superintendent teacher and advisory, student advisory councils kick off next week. So looking forward to that. We'll have our Teachers of the Year on that council, and then we also have sixth or twelfth graders serving. And so they've got, sent their tasks out to them today, and they are talking to their peers about some hot topic items, and we'll be discussing those with them next week. I think that's it. All right. That's it.
All right. We've got information only now. Is that favorite time of year, dips and sips?
The district improvement plan.
Dips and sips.
Just dips today.
Just dips today. So our district improvement plan is our collaborative visioning document, so that you've already seen that in the spring when we finished it. So it just put into a different format. We're using this really great program, which is a way for us to track it. So as you scroll down just a little bit, you'll see that there, just continue to go down a little bit. You'll see that there's different review points. So this is what the DLT, the District Leadership Team, will go through and assess each one of these steps and determine our progress, and then make comments. So it's just a really good way to make sure that we are staying on track and provide updates as needed. So we have kicked this off. There's no real changes from what you presented, what I presented the first time you saw it in the spring and that you were part of. We had a couple things in there, like we'll use cell phones for educational purposes only. Well, clearly, due to legislation, that totally changed, but a couple little things like that. Everything else, ninety-nine point nine percent exactly the way you saw it, so no real changes. Now the campuses took this exact thing. They use the same program. It's called Plan for Learning, and they copy it into the campus program, and then they make adjustments through the feedback from their campus leadership team. So they're in the process of doing that. It'll finish in September thirtieth for them. That's their due date to have this finished, and then they'll have those three checks, the same dates that the District Leadership Team will check in on the plan as well. Do you have any questions for me?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Have you give me the quick repeat of my own? Okay, so we have been working kind of behind the scenes on transition teams. Y'all have heard me talk a little bit about that. We are ready to kind of give you an official update on where we are, which we transitioned to middle schools and two high schools. Twenty twenty-six for the middle schools, twenty twenty-seven for the high schools. And so we have some of our transition team leaders here this evening. They'll talk a little bit on some updates. Some of our teams are further ahead than others, but that's just part of the process as we go through here. But we're just going to basically do a high-level overview tonight. But really, the purpose of our transitional teams are to make sure we have a smooth, strategic, and student-centered transition, and that's what we're working on across all operational areas. Planning and aligning, supporting, anticipating, and then preserving that culture, traditions, and excellence that we've talked about as we've moved through collaborative visioning in our standard. So from a timeline standpoint, a year ago spring, in twenty-four, we started researching process with other districts. We had, we've talked with some retired superintendents that districts have gone through this. Dr. Jean Burton with Rockwell ISD, some of you even met with him and listened to some of the things that he had to say as they went through this with Rockwell Heath and Rockwell High. We've also been, you know, through, whether it's Liberty Hill, Canyon, Levitt Cooper, Liberty, Midlothian, several of those that have gone through this process, and we've collaborated with them in different areas. We also have, the fall of twenty-four, we went through our zoning process. Sorry, our screens are glitching and we're going in and out here. The fall of twenty-four, I may have to reset them.
Might have to turn around.
Yeah.
Or you can speak.
The zoning was approved for middle school and high school zones. And so that was done last fall. And then we also had our website launch, the Soaring Together twenty twenty-six and beyond. I had that launched. I'm just going to turn around. We'll just keep rolling. And then this past spring, we really kind of developed our transitional teams and got them off and running. Our financial transition team kicked off a little bit sooner than the others. We had our big kickoff in July with everyone else. And then we did, we're doing our Board and Community Update now. We'll, this fall, we'll be doing our naming process for new schools, aligned with CW Local. I'll talk about that in a minute. Also, our mascot and color process for new schools. And then the winter of twenty-six, we'll be doing staffing process for the middle schools, and then parent meetings, new campus leaderships, extracurricular staff, Board and Community Updates, more in the spring. And then, of course, we'll continue this process as we move forward with middle school and high school. Just as a reminder, this, on our Soaring Together twenty twenty-six website, we have this graduation year transition chart, and it is up to date. Thank you, Rebecca. And so this shows the year twenty-five twenty-six, where everybody is. And this has been on, this has actually been on the website for probably about nine months now. Made a couple of adjustments last week, but it's a live document, so if we make any adjustments, it's automatically on there. But this kind of gives you where we're going into next year in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine. And if you're by class, where your students would fall, and so that's a great resource if you have questions on that. As far as naming of new schools, that is CW Local Board policy. So we'll have that process launching this week. It'll go out to our community for future Argyle Middle Schools. We'll do it for elementary schools and for the future high school. And so basically, we're going to do a nomination name bank, and so that'll go out. It'll be open till the first part of November. There's ten guidelines and criteria in the naming nominations. It's part of Board policy. You'll see that on the form when it comes out in the email. And then our timeline, of course, will be through November seventh. We will bring recommendations for naming facilities to the Board November seventeenth, with a potential action on naming middle schools and new high school at the December fifteenth Board Meeting. So that's kind of our timeline to get all of that done this fall. From a learner services standpoint, I'll let Dr. Jordan talk a little bit about some of her teams. She's got several teams, so you want to talk about whichever. That mic's on, you can talk from there.
Stay right here. Okay. So the team has met several times. We have talked about, like, as far as curriculum, it's more going to be, how many teacher guides do we need? Because our number of students isn't growing any more than it would grow in a normal year. So once we have the course offering, which the timelines have already been laid out, once we know which courses are going to make based on student interest, then we will determine the number of guides. So we kind of have a timeline worked out. Science labs, we have a list, PE materials. We have a list that will be coming in the next week or so. So some of those specialized classes, CTE, PT, PE, and science labs, that need lots of stuff. We have those lists, which are, they have links and prices, so we feel really organized there. And training, we have already kind of set aside some time. We know we'll be hiring some new teachers, so that we, they are fully trained in all of our curriculum. And Dr. Claus has done a great job working with counseling, so that we have those master schedules and course requests going in on a good schedule.
Ms. Funderv, you want to talk a little bit about special programs? Because I know you were asking for data today, so I know you're hard at work.
So, yes, we are looking at continuum of services. So as we split, we're going to have to decide where our self-contained units are going to be housed. So we're looking at actual student lists to determine who is special ed, who's ESL, so we can determine how many we're going to have at each campus and go from there. That's also going to influence, you know, our curriculum needs, because our self-contained units have a specialized curriculum that they use. And then any opening inventories for any new units that we're opening, we're gathering that right now. What we use for life skills units, what we use for functional or academic or the AVLS classes or a base class or anything like that. We are gathering materials now for any motor labs, any additional assessments we might need for speech OT, any assessment, basically. And, of course, we're not, we're always gaining kids every year, but it's just more of a real adjustment of where those kids are going to be. So, you know, assessment teams might have to readjust, but we're kind of busting at our seams right now with assessment staff. So we're probably going to need some additional assessment staff moving forward. So that's what we're trying to figure out right now, is where would those people best be served? And so, and then just looking at, again, our emergent bilinguals, where our 504 kids are, how many new dyslexia therapists are we going to need based on what kids we have going where? And then additional training. And then we partner a lot with transportation, because we've got to move these kids between the campuses. So... cause we gotta move these kids between the campuses. So, um, all of these things, we are gathering information. Um, we are meeting on Monday to kind of set a timeline of where we are right now. So, um, yeah, that's what we're working on right now.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Dr. Kloss, you wanna talk about counseling?
Hey, so, we have met a few times and we have really been focused on the experience of the transition and ensuring that we have all of the resources needed to make sure that transition goes smoothly, especially focusing on course selection and making sure that process is well timed and that it's a good experience for all of the students. We are working on, you know, ensuring that we have a good list of resources for our counseling programming and the prevention programming that we provide, as well as the staffing numbers as everybody else. Um, and we are also working on, um, building one course planning guide for middle schools and Argyle ISD that all students will use. Um, and that's where they will make their course requests through and classes will be, uh, will make based on their course requests. So.
I got some questions about that.
Yeah.
Every year, this is nothing different. I mean, every year the kids put in their request, we approve a long list of offerings. Some make, some don't. So, in terms of this process, it's really not gonna be any different when, when these transitions occur. Some courses are gonna make and some are not. But at the, at the core of education is, um, these course, both these campuses are gonna teach English.
Yes, sir.
Math, science, history. And it becomes down to what other electives may make or not.
Right.
So, I mean.
Absolutely. Yes, yes, sir. So, we are combining everything from sixth grade to eighth grade. There will be one course planning guide that all students will use at every middle school campus. Um, and then from there, all of those, um, electives that you, you talk about, we'll have to look at, you know, where are those requests taking place and how does staffing work based on that? And so, that's why the timing of our course selection process is very important. Our timing is going to be straight from January to spring break. And so, we've been going over it and it is just, we are moving. But everybody's gonna get FaceTime with counselors. Everybody's gonna get the resources and we're gonna have all of that, you know, lined up this year. But, yeah.
But whether the course makes or not is, is truly dependent on how the kid, how a, is it how a sixth grader or a seventh grader fills out their course selections and what they.
Right, yes.
And what's, is a parent playing any role in this?
Yes, yes, yeah. So, the way that we have it set up this year is there will be a transition night for parents for both campuses. Parents will come in, they'll learn about the courses that are available, learn about what, you know, the rising sixth graders will learn about going into middle school. What does that look like? Cause it's different. So, um, and that'll, that'll be a very exciting time. They'll also have a course fair. So, they'll be able to see the electives that are available to them. We keep in mind that for our rising fifth graders, this is the first time they're making these decisions. So, that's big. So, we wanna make them prepared. They will all get guidance lessons, um, taught in their classes, rising sixth, seventh and eighth. So, fifth graders, sixth graders, seventh graders, all the way up through twelfth grade too. But, um, and from there, they'll get their course card like they typically do and that will go home. And, and parents will be able to have conversations and we'll send resources home and things for parents to know as they have those conversations. The course planning guide will be linked. So, they'll be able to see that, um, virtually. Um, so, we will have those available. And then we will have everybody come down to the campuses. So, your sixth grade center and your middle school, they'll come down and visit the students and they'll do what we call kind of a rah rah assembly, get them all excited to go to their new school. Um, and then they will actually enter their course selections. So, while they'll have it on paper, they'll also put it into the computer. Um, and then we double check. So, we meet with kids as they have questions and meet with parents. And then, right after spring break, there's a course verification window where parents, after we've cleaned all that up and gotten, gotten it entered in, parents get to view it. And then they can send in course change requests if they need to. So, we make sure there's several opportunities throughout this spring.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Libraries?
Libraries. So, our librarians have been working together. We, they're getting three quotes from library of PermaBound and Bound to Stay Bound. They expect to have those by the end of October to be able to start that process of, um, turning in the three bids and determining which one is best. They're very clear that they're going to provide the legislation and the rules to each one of our vendors so that they have a clear understanding of, of the expectations of Texas, but also Argyle ISD with the content of our books. And we'll look at those lists extremely carefully, one by one, to make sure that what we are talking in our library are the safest things for our kids with high interest materials for them.
Alright, Ms. Stewart?
Hi. Um, I believe you mentioned earlier that our finance transition team started a little bit earlier. We started, um, last summer and fall, um, looking at both the middle school and the high school and, and starting having, having our meetings and working through something. Um, as you know, um, in our normal budget, staffing is eighty to eighty-one percent. And so, that plays a large role. And so, that process, um, has started with human resources. And so, we're, we've taken some preliminary data. Um, and we'll continue to meet and refine those budgets. Uh, we're, you know, look at the curriculum, cause everything you've heard talking about, they get all the information and then we pull the dollars that that's tied to and, you know, form the overall budget with that. So, um, you know, there's things to consider like the curriculum plan, the staffing plan, if there's any rebranding, FFME for, uh, new buildings. When we, uh, look at transportation, there might be some trip buses needed. So, um, as you split middle schools and then the ground equipment by the campuses. Um, and moving in, as y'all know, that our budget year starts nine one, which is a little bit after our school year. So, some costs for, um, a campus may actually start a year earlier in that budget. So, for this year, example, when we did the, um, twenty-five, twenty-six budget, we have to consider what's happening in the summer of twenty-six and take those costs in place. You're looking a year early. So, we've already taken some of that pre-work on that middle school transition budget and put that into this year's budget, cause we do have to account for a little.
And it would even include like hiring the principal, because that's gonna start in the spring and.
That's correct. We, we included several months of a principal in there. Um, and so, we, we have some things that we've gotta look at a little bit earlier than some of the other, uh, transition teams. So, we're continuing to work on that and, um, always refining the, the list and working with each department because, um, each department has the information and they're developing the information and then we take that and turn it into a budget. So.
Greg, I know he, their group hasn't really started yet, but it's kind of the actions they'll need there. Do you think, would you add to that, Greg? Anything in there that's pretty standard for opening new campuses? Y'all have done that enough with the elementaries that you have a pretty good system in place for that. Uh, transportation, are you wanna?
Would you like to just talk on this a little bit?
Mr. Bell?
Brady's been working on this.
I know. We, we heard from him several times today.
So, we have obviously several pieces of this. I've been kind of meeting with individuals. Uh, Todd and I had about a forty-five minute conversation the other day. I've talked with Dr. Carpenter. She's put me in touch with the director of transportation at Midlothian, cause they've split just like we have. So, we have, uh, some time in the next couple of weeks set up to go meet with her and just go through what they got right and what they got wrong and, and, and how we can plan for that. Um, we have a consultant on campus with us this, this week that is looking at what do we need to do to prepare for routing bus, buying buses and things to get ready for middle school, for elementary fives and for the high school split. And so, you know, it's, it's, it's down the road, but it's not down the road. So, you know, we can start planning for that now. Uh, you know, we have the bond money for some of the, the buses. So, you know, that's, we just wanna know, we wanna get the number right. So, we're, uh, uh, we worked on that all day long today and, and, and got, we met with our routing company. He and me, me and the consultant met with the routing company and, and created a whole nother year for next year. And we've been developing routes and so, stuff like that today. So, we're working on, working through that this week. Uh, you know, Todd and I visited about things of, you know, what if our middle schools and our high schools are in different, different districts, which they're gonna be? Um, you know, and this district plays on this night and this district plays on this night. How many buses, what's, how's that gonna affect busing, band and all the things? And, you know, during playoff seasons, when, you know, you have, uh, two football teams overlapping, they're in the playoffs. Basketball's starting up, you know, cross countries going to state. You have all these things. And, you know, you, you, sometimes it's short notice. Basketball may be playing Thursday or football may be playing Thursday. You know, volleyball could still be overlapping a little bit. So, there's just a lot to consider in the number of buses that we're gonna need. And, uh, so, you know, just working with these people and then, you know, obviously the, the, uh, traffic that we're experiencing in, in Argyle is, is significant too. So, you know, and, and, uh, we're building schools. They're not building roads. So, you know, just trying to navigate that as, as we can. So, uh, you guys have any questions specific to that? But.
Imagine your buses get bogged down in that traffic.
Yeah.
Quite, I mean, I see it. I'm driving from one end of the district.
Yeah, we're, we were talking today about, you know, the, uh, middle school, cause we try to avoid four oh seven just because it, it just backs up. So, you know. Yeah, Sam Davis is a lifesaver.
But at the same time, I mean, I'm, I'm on old Justin and I see, you know, I mean, this is kind of when I, I'm like, old Justin is backed all the way up, because you have the east end of the district coming all the way to the middle school, cutting through the lakes. The lakes are upset because their name is stacked up.
Absolutely.
All the way across. And some of that's gonna be better, because it's gonna be.
Yeah, once you have a middle school here and, you know, hopefully we can eventually get where we don't cross tracks, which that'd be huge.
Which is gonna be helpful.
You know, just, you know, people don't think about every bus has to stop at the track. You're crossing them, you know, four or five times a day. That's significant time. And then, you know, and then you always catch lights and stuff, cause you got cars in between. You know, it's, it adds significant time to getting students to going and back home.
Do we know any attorneys that work with Tech Stop?
Well, maybe.
I know. I've taken probably six different routes to the high school. I mean, I know them all.
Skyreel everything.
Yeah.
And I hear he wants to drive a bus. So.
I got it.
Yes, ma'am.
So, when you talk about ordering new buses, when we bonded for buses, did we consider that? That we were gonna need some extra because of the?
Yes, we did.
High school split, okay.
Yes, ma'am. We, we looked at the fact in there and planning for trip buses, um, for routes and how that would be affected by middle schools and high schools.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Student nutrition?
So, student nutrition's also, um, an area that we're looking at. Um, mainly it's based off of, uh, students' location, um, and the number of participations in lunches and breakfast. Um, and so, they will work on their smallers and their campus schedules play a big role into that. And so, they're meeting and starting to work with that information and work through getting all of those types up and running when the campuses open.
Alright, and staffing and personnel. So, uh, Dr. Daniel and his group, um, obviously he's got a lot of members on his team, but looking at our current staffing schedules and then determining what the staffing needs will be. So, setting the timelines for transfers. So, obviously for the middle school staffing process, that's as soon as the, uh, principal's named, that in January, we'll be looking at that staffing process, um, the transfer form. You know, it'll, it'll go out to our teachers. Those that are interested, obviously, are gonna put in. But we're gonna, you know, work with that principal to, and then, uh, look at the, the balance of that. Um, so, you kind of look at your veteran teachers and your newer teachers and find a balance of both of those campuses. So, we, so we manage that effectively and efficiently and then program offerings and things like that. So, he's working through that with staff services. As you can tell, many of these teams overlap in a lot of ways. Um, while they have their own little silo, they do overlap in, in, in many ways. Um, from the student experience, um, you know, who better to run that than those that are leading our students in those areas? Uh, Mr. Byrd, obviously is an extor right now. You can hear them. And Ms. Turek also had, uh, groups of students doing lessons tonight. So, they're not in here. But, um, I did have a message to share with you from Mr. Byrd. He said that they're actively gathering data and making plans. Their next meeting is next Tuesday. Their transition team members are very excited about being part of the process now so that they can help be in the decision-making moving forward. But they have, they've already met a couple of times and they've got, you know, our, um, student list of who's on in which, uh, zone so that they can accurately plan for that. So, they've done a great job getting kicked off there. Um, athletics, same way. You know, obviously our coaches are busy in, in practicing and finishing things, but they're working through that as well, you know, looking at, um, state titles, records, monuments, inventory, staffing needs, branding. But, I mean, baseball, softball transition in year one, when we're waiting for this facility to be opened. So, there's a lot there on the athletic side as well. Um, he's got key, key players at the table in that as far as memberships. And then several of us are in on these at various points during that. Um, activity funds, booster clubs, all of those processes are, are getting kicked off. Obviously, some of them that are in season right now, theirs is a little bit slower taking off, but they're definitely, um, and they have, they have kicked off their process. Uh, same thing with boosters and PTOs. Shannon, Donnie, y'all have anything to add to that? Do you mind coming up here, please?
We have been on a lot of the other committees. So, our committees haven't started meeting yet. And some of these are kind of, there, there are some issues that are pressing, that we need to make decisions right now and some that we have a little bit of time. Um, for this, what we've been doing is talking to our leaders of those organizations, like the PTOs, and making sure that they're thinking, like, when you're, um, getting your officers for next year and thinking about splitting, um, you know, you need to make sure you have people in place for both sides. So, it's a lot of conversations with the outside, um, people. And, um, but we have reached out to our committee members and let them know that they are on a committee. We're excited to start meeting and we plan on doing that very soon. I think we're the next committee too.
You are.
Yeah, there we are.
There you are.
So, um, this is a big committee, cause organizations and traditions are both really big topics. So, um, what we've done on this so far is, I don't know why Shannon's sitting over there, but she is.
She's saying, come on, Miss, come on, Ms. Knowles.
She started a, um, shared document where we're just kind of making a list of traditions and, and organizations. Um, a lot of the organizations are at the high school, obviously. She knows that whole list. I know the middle school whole list. Um, and then just making sure all those organizations are prepared to have two, particularly the middle school ones first and then the high school ones eventually. Um, so, it's kind of a two-tier. Um, you know, first we'll need to look at middle school traditions and make sure we have that list and continue those. And we might have a little bit of breathing room to make sure we break off and have the high school, cause we've got a year, you know, to think on that. So, I think it's important that we're just.
School event and then what is a PTO event? You know, like the balloon release, that's not necessarily a school.
Right.
But it is a tradition that, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's where we're at.
Very good.
I got a question. How many kids you get, how many seventh and eighth graders? And I should know that. You probably showed it. How many seventh and eighth graders you got?
We're at, we're at ten forty-four and it's like five twenty-eight, five seventeen, give or take. I think I've seen my math wrong, but something like that.
Both, both your seventh and eighth grade classes over five hundred?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. And then, um, and I imagine your, your participation and your interest levels in the, in the sports, like volleyball that we're already going, is, is pretty high. Football participation.
Yeah, it'll be nice to have extra seats in those sports when we split from running two campuses. More people will get to participate.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, ladies.
Alright, mascots and colors. So, a big part of this will be feedback from the community. So, we will release pretty soon a message to the key zone, these high school zone, for their feedback on a verdict prep and a color scheme that we go with Argyle Red. So, our team will evaluate those and present a recommendation to board in November. And we talked about how that would look potentially. So, some brainstorming has happened on that, how that presentation of the colors and the bird would, uh, would look like. So, those are some of the things and conversations that are happening right now. Some of the resources we can use to display that to the board. And then obviously a big piece of this communication and the laying out of that platform of how we got to this point, uh, to the community, to our staff, to our students, to everyone and some of the actions that we, how we got to these positions. And just, uh, along the way, it'll have a, a large strategic layout of the process and the plans and dedicated web pages. The next slide is dedicated to web pa, a website. So, a platform that showed the timeline from A to Z of how we got here and the process and all the applications that it has for all the groups.
Okay, so, questions, comments, feedback? It's kind of in a nutshell, the teams that are working behind the scenes that, you know, nobody's gonna really see. Um, but those are all things that we are doing, you know, concurrently with this year's work. So.
To make it as seamless as possible.
To try to make it as seamless as possible. That's right. It seems, it will not be perfect, but, uh, we have really great minds behind all these teams and a lot of excitement with the people that are wanting to be a part of those teams. So, appreciate it. I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's a lot of work on them outside of their day-to-day and everybody has stepped up in big ways. And so, can't thank them enough for that. for that, because they've all done that in their own very, very different way, but some, like, some of them, you've seen their, you may see their names four, five, six times on different teams, and, uh, no one, everybody wants to be a part of it, because they wanna be part of the solutions and the decisions, so, appreciate that from them.
Appreciate the update.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
This is Mr. Lemish.
Mr. Lemish is up.
All right, so I wanted to give a final report on the DVA, or the District Vulnerability Assessment, uh, this went really well back last March, uh, what it is, is we had two agents from TEA who came and spent two days with us, they looked at everything you could imagine, school safety related, um, about thirty days before, they started asking for documents, there were forty-eight different sets of documents we had to provide, um, got all those in, and then they came out, spent those two days with us, uh, they give us a rubric ahead of time to look through, there's fifty-seven things we had to get checked off at the district level, and then twenty-seven items, they checked at every campus, as well as looked at the IAC, field houses, all those things as well, um, so they walked all those campuses, they checked, uh, all of our security posture, they talked to, uh, staff members, they tried to make sure they talked to at least one substitute that was on each campus, they spoke with the nurse, a campus administrator, um, talked to lots of different people to make sure that everybody had the training on what to do during various drills, so, uh, or emergencies. They observed lots of best practices, just some of them that I put up here, daily door checks, uh, we're required by law to check all of our exterior doors once a week, but our officers do a great job, it's pretty much every day, um, and there's other folks that will fill in, some administrators will fill in, I'll check doors occasionally and log those as well, uh, they were blown away by the number of AEDs, uh, bleeding control kits, and then naloxone, or you may know it as Narcan, on each campus, we're required to have one AED and one bleeding control kit on each campus, uh, we average about nine, uh, and then we are required to have one dose of Narcan on all of our secondary campuses, we have them on the elementary also, and all of our elementaries, we average around nine doses or so of those, they're all in the same places, everywhere there's an AED, there's also a bleeding control kit and naloxone, uh, they were pressed, highly visible police officers, that was a big deal, um, and then, we have more of the entry-resistant film than what's required by law on some of our windows and things, so they were impressed with that, that we haven't just done the bare minimum to get by, but we've actually done what we needed to do, to do everything we can to keep our students safe. Uh, we ended up with a total of three findings, um, those findings, we had one door was missing that window film, I think it'd probably been maybe broken by, I don't know, mowers have broken them before, different things, the glass had been replaced, but it didn't have the window film, then they had two doors that they found that had the window film, but did not have the necessary caulking to go around the edges to adhere it to the frame, so those were found as, as findings, that's three doors out of over four hundred doors across the district that they found issues with, and they checked every single exterior door, we pushed them from the inside, made sure they latched, um, and that's on top of all those other things in that rubric, um, there's hundreds and hundreds of things they could find findings on, so, overall, this was fantastic, um, all those findings, then, were corrected very, very quickly, by the end of this last school year, they were done, um, and that's due, Tommy and Angel were fantastic through the entire process, really, of anything we needed to prep for it, or these follow-up things, if, everything got fixed really fast, it was basically as fast as a vendor could make it happen. Uh, so the conclusion, then, Dr. Carbonar and I met with, uh, Chip Roberts, he's a senior agent in charge of the North Sector for TEA, uh, Safety and Security, and we, our three findings was actually the fewest, set a record for the fewest they had found up to that point, so, they'd been doing these for two years at that point, so, uh, we're very proud of that. Last thing I'll say, and I try and say this every time I get the opportunity, but we have an incredibly safe district, um, and that's because it is a true team effort. School safety doesn't fall on one person or the police department, it's really every employee's responsibility, and everybody takes it so seriously, I truly, truly appreciate that, um, and then, just present staff, the counselors play a big part on it, with the threat assessment things that they do, uh, campus administration, our nurses, our front office staff that are checking people in, they're really our first line of defense, maintenance does a great job, um, yeah, district admin, um, the board, both present and past, we've made decisions, the reason this went so well is really because of the work that's been put in over the last ten years, the districts that have waited for the state to come through to say what they needed to do, and then try to do it, they're in trouble right now, trying to keep up with all this, this stuff for the DVA, so, the fact we've been proactive and not waited for the state to tell us what was best to keep kids safe, uh, we just did what was right, that really paid off here on this, so, I thank you guys and, uh, everyone that had a part in this.
Thank you, Mr. Lemish.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Liz or Brady?
All right, Transportation Staffing Plan?
That's who be Mr. Lemish.
Okay.
Good evening, how are you guys?
Good evening.
Good, thank you.
So, uh, along with what Lemish says, you know, this is an unbelievable school district where we have so much teamwork, I mean, it takes all of us, and, and it's, it's just an awesome place to, to be a part of, um, so, giving you a little bit of history about what we're, we're trying to do here is, we've struggled with, with hiring bus drivers, um, I, uh, gonna brag on Brady for just a little bit, he's, he's done an amazing job at, at working so many hours, it's, it's, I mean, he gets to work every day at five forty-five and leaves at six P.M., so, uh, he's, he's working himself to death trying to, to get everything done, but he's, he's had sixty-one interviews since, uh, May first, so, uh, it's, it's, he's gone through a lot, and he's hired fourteen people, and, uh, we're still needing six, so, at, at this time, uh, it seems like every time we hire somebody, they're, uh, somebody in line is, is ready to retire, or they've moved off, they've, something happens to where it's, it's just not working, so, uh, he's gotta continue to, to try to see if we can't interview some more and, and find some more, uh, drivers, and it's, it's, it's been pretty difficult, um, so we've put together a proposal with, him and I did a lot of, a lot of talking and, and kinda did some research on, on some other school districts, on, on what they're paying, um, we know that Northwest pays twenty-three sixty-nine to start, uh, just a few cents more than we do right now, uh, Denton pays twenty-three fifty, the, the problem, though, is not the amount of money that they're, they're getting per hour, it's the amount of hours that they're offered, so, uh, both Denton and Northwest are offering seven and eight hours, we're only offering five, so, for somebody to raise a family on five hours at, at that amount of money, it's, it's, it's very difficult, so, that's where we're struggling more than, than anything, is, is the number of hours, so, um, we've, we've put together a proposal to, uh, raise the pay of a dollar an hour to twenty-four fifty, because currently, it's, it's twenty-three fifty, uh, and then, give them a six-hour guarantee instead of a five-hour guarantee that we have right now, and, since we're in need of separating a few routes that are large right now, we've got two that are overcrowded, uh, maybe more than that after we separate them, but, uh, we're really needing drivers in a hurry, uh, so we're, we're proposing that we give a, a five-hundred-dollar stipend for drivers that, that commit to us and, and are able to have a safe driving record for ninety days, and then after that ninety days, they will receive that money, but they would have to stay there at least for that amount of time, and, uh, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars for our current bus drivers for any referrals that they would have on sending us some, some drivers that maybe they've worked with in the past, that might be interested in coming over for some of this new stuff that we're offering, so, that's what we're trying to do.
So, Northwest and Denton just save a lot for more hours, because they have more sites, in general? So, more, more activities throughout the day?
Yeah, we're sandwiched between the two, and they, and they have so many schools that, you know, they have a lot of inner campus driving during the day, and so it's not just routes, it's not just field trips, you know, I mean, I know, I interviewed a guy from Denton, he said, I, I drive to Saline every day, taking people, you know, they have a lot of programs where they, they take people to other, other districts, and, and we, we do that some, too, but, you know, they just, they off, you know, we had a driver come to us, because she said, I'm trying to get a degree, and they want to work me fifty and sixty hours a week, and I just at Northwest, and I just can't do that, so she's over here working in the morning, she goes to school online during the break, that works out great for her, but, you know, I mean, a lot of the people, even I contact on Indeed, they, their first question is, how much do you pay, and how many hours do you get, and as soon as I tell them the hours, they're, I, it's not enough hours for me to leave somewhere else, and so, or the job, they may be working another job, they may be looking to do something different, uh, but, you know, it's just not a forty-hour job, so, you know, any, anything we can do to make it a little bit more enticing, because, you know, there is, if we can get them here, there is the aspect of, we have great people, I mean, we have fabulous people, and our districts are fabulous, and, you know, the same person that came from Northwest, she sits here, I've never had kids behave so well, and I've driven at two other districts, so, if we can get them to come here, they'll stay, I think, we just, you know, they just won't leave, because, you know, they, they, we, what, we, we are, when I interview and they, we start telling them what we offer, we just, we just can't compete with the districts that are immediately around us.
What, I wanna touch on that, about people staying here, and one of the things we do monitor at our, on our staffing level, certainly on the teachers', is, you know, retention rate and turnover rate, do you have an idea of what your turnover, I mean, you're, you're just now taken this position, but do you know what the turnover rate was for bus drivers?
Uh, I mean, I think historically, I think across every transportation, it's pretty high, uh, I mean, I don't have a percentage.
I mean, it's something I would be interested in knowing, because one of the things, you know, that, what I see here in this, and, and I'm all for equipping you, and arming you to solve this problem, because I think it's been a, I mean, it was a problem a few years ago, we allocated some resources to it, seemed like it was better last year, here we are again, but one of the things when I look at this, this is incentivizing new people to come on, and, and, and I guess the, maybe the dollar per hour helps the existing bus drivers, but one of the things we often overlook is, hey, we have good people we've already hired, how are we keeping them from leaving? And, and, and is there some thought that we need to put in to this, that says, hey, we need to incentivize people not to leave and retire on us, or, you know, that, and so, I, that, that would be more money, and, and I just wanted to.
The referral bonus is one thing.
We do worry about that a lot, when we come to you with a plan, and we think about what they're thinking when they hear this, because we're not taking care of them, we're taking care of somebody that's coming in to help us with our problem, and, and sometimes that's, that's hard for them to take, and we just have to talk through it with them, and then just tell them, you know, we're here for you, and this is, you know, we're trying to get this problem fixed.
And you can have sign-on bonuses, you can have retention bonuses.
You can also look at longevity, you can look at longevity.
And I would just say, this is something that's coming back next month?
Yes.
It was just something to think about, get with Liz on, about is there, I don't wanna overlook who's here.
Yeah, I'm a hundred percent agree with you, yeah.
We appreciate you bringing that up, because I know they'll definitely appreciate that, for sure.
Okay.
So, I, I think the referral bonus is really good, like the lady that came from Northwest, right, she can reach back out and tell them, hey, the kids behave over here, um, but what about cross-department cafeteria workers, when their day, their day is done at noon or one or whatever, can they go drive the bus, is there a reason to, they're already on board?
So, we've, we've tried that in the past, and, and it's, it's, they can either drive in the morning or the afternoon, and it doesn't work for both.
Right.
So, look what they have driven in the afternoon for us, for sure, I don't know that we have anybody interested right now, currently, but.
We had a, we had a monitor last two weeks, we used aides out of two different campuses to, to fill a monitor spot last year, so they would work, one of them would do the morning, one of them would do the afternoon, they didn't wanna do that all, you know, they, they, it, it was the last two months of school, because the monitor resigned, but, they were willing to do it, it was their students that were gonna be on the bus, and so, um, but, you know, they were both, they're, I don't wanna do this for long term, so, you know, it, yeah, uh, we've thought, we've thought through that, absolutely, but it's, it's kinda like Tommy said, it's usually, they can do morning, because it conflict, it doesn't conflict with their school schedule or afternoon.
Right, you'd have to have one for the morning, one for the afternoon.
Or you can think about, like, what you were talking about earlier, about, about, you know, different games and away games, things like that, that they maybe could fill in in those afternoon hours, on those, you know, it's not a real route, route, it's every day, but.
They could get extra money, if they would just get certified to drive a bus, yeah, it would help us on field trips, for sure, getting our, our band to the games on time.
But I like the idea of the longevity pay.
I do.
I think that's something to really look at.
For sure.
Okay, thank y'all.
Thank you guys for listening to us.
Okay. I think we have, is it eleme, are we elementary five? Nope, where we on next?
Investment RFQ.
Oh, investment RFQ.
Okay, this is our Investment Management Services, um, RFQ that we talked about last month, um, just kind of a reminder, we put this out, um, we had four firms that submitted, their packets back in with information, we reviewed all four of those, and looked through everything, and went through a ranking, um, and Hilltop Securities is the firm that we are recommending, um, I do believe, I think we mentioned last time, that price is not a factor in an RFQ, um, but as you know, that is a consideration during, um, the actual contract part, and so, for Hilltop Investments, um, the fee is three basis points for the first hundred and fifty million and one basis points over to an, um, over to a hundred and fifty million, so, um, that's the cost factor in there, it would be paid out of the investment earnings, but as you know, um, over the last couple of years, we've had quite a bit of bond money that we have sold, um, we just had another big bond issue, and so, we feel the need to have an advisory service with our investments, uh, to get the best, um, dollar for the district out of this, and, and the advisory services that they would bring, do y'all have any questions over that?
All right, entertainer motion to approve action item ten A is presented.
Removed.
Mr. Matthew Slate motion to approve, I have a second.
Second.
Mr. West from second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, tonight, uh, bringing you back, uh, our GMP for elementary number five, uh, we brought it to you last month for information, uh, at that time, we were at, uh, forty-eight point nine million, um, there we go, got it, there we go. So, we're bringing it back to you today, we were able to get down, uh, a little over two million dollars to forty-six point eight, compared to where we were with the preliminary one we had for information, um, so we've gone ahead here on this, um, we talked about, uh, the allowance, uh, for our FM four oh seven improvements, that was a must-have, uh, we kept it separate since it's not directly related to the building itself, in terms of looking at what our square foot costs are, that's why we've shown it separately, but the GMP that we're bringing to you tonight with that included is forty-nine million three hundred twenty-two thousand six hundred eighty-three, uh, then we did also have a couple of other, uh, optional allowances that we presented last time, and we have those on here as well, uh, if those are things that we would like to add, we certainly can, uh, we have listed here as alternate two, which is an allowance for an access road, that'd be an access road on the western side of the property to get to Sam Davis, is what that would be for, and then alternate number three was an allowance, uh, for landscape water well, for irrigation water well, and that was something that we looked at, uh, last month, so we haven't included those already as accepted, um, just kinda, if you'd like to, we can certainly add those, um, I don't think those are, are any that we need at this time, uh, we have looked, uh, at some of the watering costs and the payback, based on watering one inch per week, uh, is gonna be, uh, right now, it's standing about twenty-four years, when we compare that to our estimated water costs, or not water.
Okay, um, the good, I think, let's talk about the good. This. This forty-six point eight million, if I'm not mistaken, is roughly about eight percent higher than JRE, which was like forty-three million?
It was at forty-three something. I think we came in very close to forty-three at the, at the final.
And the reason I, I say that's good news is because we're talking, we're about two years.
About two years.
And so, we are starting to see perhaps some leveling out here on inflation and cost.
Yes. And with the fact that we're, you know, we're at a, a bid as well, any in tariff inflation that they may have included, that's included at this point. So, we're not, you know, we're not asking them to guess at a budget level like we, you know, we're at a sixty percent budget.
What we're not seeing is the escalation that we saw between the twenty-two opening of South and the twenty-four opening of JRE.
Correct. Correct. That, that has slowed way down.
That's slowed way down, so that's good. Still a lot, still going up, but it's, it's better. As it relates to the allowances, the, the alternative two and three, what, what's the, what's the downside to waiting?
To what?
To waiting. Like, you just say, "Hey, look, let's just see before I put in." I, I'm kind of out on the water well, but on the, on the million and a half access road, what's, if I don't put that in the GMP, but I, we, we realize, "Hey, we need this."
Uh, the, the downside is, I mean, it's just an allowance. That's what it is. It's our best estimate. And, and we've, you know, tried to run some numbers and come up with a real figure. Uh, that would be in today's dollars. So, you know, you would have some inflation more than likely. Uh, but until we actually have a design and put something out there, we won't know the true cost of it anyway.
And this is the access road that would go north that ties into Sam Davis?
That would tie into Sam Davis, yes.
And do, okay.
And, and it's not a choice that needs to be, you know, made today. I mean, we can, we can add it, you know, in three months and six months and two years and five years.
What's the drop date on when that would be to be, that decision be, be made?
Um, to, to have it at the time the school completes, let me, let me look at that and get back to you. I don't know what that is. We will, I'll need to get with a civil engineer and, and see what the design timeline looks like.
The design, the design, I mean, the way you've designed the site, you're, you're planning for that access road to be potentially added at some point?
Uh, well, we, we kind of added the idea of that at a later date after we already had the site planning done. So, we need to look and see how we can make that work, you know, with as little adjustment of what we've already built. I believe it will affect our detention and so we have to look at that and, and see what changes may have to be made to that detention pond.
Okay, but if we were to add this later, you're not going to go, "Okay, now that we have to go reconfigure the whole drive aisles" or anything like that?
No, not, not any more or less than we already have to do today. The, the building of the school itself will not affect that.
Would anyone else have access to that road? I'm thinking helping with building costs.
That would really just be our decision whether or not we, we allowed it or not. I mean, it, it will go along the, the western side of the Grove Church property. You know, I don't know what their building plans look like, if they might want to connect to that or not. But, that would just be totally up to us.
I mean, the only thing that makes me think, you know, whether we include it now or later, I, I just, we're going to have to continue, and I'm glad we got the two and a half million in there. I mean, I think we're just going to, this site's going to need some money spent on it to divert traffic, to handle traffic, both drop, drop off and pick up. So, I mean, I think we're probably going to probably want to add it, but I also think about Gateway to the west as, you know, maybe there's some momentum going on there on that site that maybe that could be, in a few months, we may know more about, hey, that may be, instead of going north to Sam Davis, we can spend some money to go west towards Gateway.
That's right.
And that may be money.
Traffic light.
So, I think with the fluidity of what's going on out there outside of the boundaries of our land, it may be prudent to just see what, what the latest is with the other towns.
Right.
Guess we'd need to know a date.
I can, I can get you that. I don't have it tonight, but I can certainly get you that, that date so we coincide with completion of the school.
So, do West, South and JRE all have wells?
Uh, they do not.
Any of them?
None, none of them have wells.
Okay.
Just, just this campus here.
Uh, this one and Hilltop.
And Hilltop.
Three seventy-seven.
Three seventy-seven has a well also, yes, I'm sorry.
The thought for the well on this side was that it was a bigger site, it was the fifty acres. And that's where that discussion.
So, it's actually going to, so is your payback on the elementary school only or middle school too?
No, the, the, the payback is considering the whole site. So, it's considering both campuses watering at one inch, all of the grass and trees.
If you go back and look at the picture, I don't know if you were, you were here. That's not intended to be an insult. It's just an observation of every meaning. But, um, the, the, there's quite a bit of landscape on that.
There is.
I mean, there's a ton of trees. I mean, it looks like, I mean.
It, it calculated out about nineteen acres.
Stuff died, died all over the place. And I think that stuff's going to die too.
Well, so maybe we cut back on our landscaping. We'll go well.
The town, the town force dictates.
Let's have that.
So, I mean, that's, I was, it all looked pretty right now because.
It does.
Okay, so you know where I stand on the well. Can, can you re-educate me, not you, Josh, on the alternate one? So, am I, am I correct in saying we, we have to build this? Who, who's requiring it again?
The, Tax Stop's going to require it. We can't restripe to create the center turn lane without rebuilding the shoulders.
Okay.
Now, we don't have to do that, but to open the campus, to open even the middle school, we believe this is absolutely necessary that we create this, the turn lane and have the stoplight.
Because we were only given one way in and out, right?
Uh, that would certainly be a, a big part of that.
I just want to make sure I understand why we're incurring this cost. The other piece of that is though, right, when they do widen four oh seven, they're going to rip up everything we just paid for.
Yes, I, I expect that everything we do will not be their permanent solution. Because we, we will go back with asphalt and I believe the new six-lane divide is going to be all concrete.
I just think that.
I think it will be there for a long time though.
Where this school is situated is just outside of that Gateway breakout project.
It is.
So, I mean, I think we're, I mean, this may be there ten years. I'm, I'm not arguing that point, right? My point is that we're incurring two and a half million dollars because our friends in the town won't give us access out the other way. Yeah, I mean, we lost postmaster. Yeah. So, I, I, I agree. I don't think we have a choice, but the other thing about that is, is it, we're going to spend that money. We'll get to keep the light, but the rest is going to get ripped up eventually, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If we get, if we get access at Gateway to be able to cut across to our property, would we need this? Would we still need this?
When's that going to happen? You got it, we can't, at his point, you can't open it without that. I mean, somebody's going to have, there'll be a lot of traffic accidents.
Jeff, with, with the access road, do you have a scenario in your head where that road's never needed?
Uh, I, I don't think it will really ever be needed as long as the Gateway comes along and something happens there west of us and we're able to connect to that. I don't think it would be needed in that case. And I have heard that there's, there's some things starting to move there. I mean, I haven't had an update in a while, but it, it could be something that over the next few months that we get a better idea of what, what may happen there and start some real talks about access.
Are we planning for that in our site, that there could be traffic from the west on Gateway?
Uh, with the site plan we have, it'd be very easy because our western ingress runs right along the western property line, so we would just connect right to it. There's nothing that we would lose to the west of that. It's just setbacks and easements.
I mean, the two and a half million is really, I mean, it's a lot. It's, I hate it, but we spent money on roads to build South. We spent money on roads to build JRE and we're going to spend money on roads to build on this four oh seven site and. Those roads, I'll stay there. Yeah. Permanent. We're in the road building business.
Refused access to a public road.
Yeah. I mean, you would like to see Tax Stop have sufficient infrastructure out there to support this, but they don't. And I think everybody's frustrated by that. The unfortunate thing is we'll spend millions on it.
Correct.
Oh, yeah.
So, you're looking for something not to exceed forty-nine? No?
Yes.
Yes.
Forty-nine million?
Yes.
Forty-nine, three twenty-two.
Yeah.
So, that, that's including the option one?
That includes option one, but not alternate one, but not the other two at this time.
Okay.
Okay. Does anyone else have any other questions?
So, my question is if we add two or three, are we going to have to come back and revise our price?
Uh, yes.
You do a change.
We've done that before.
Well, we, we have a not to exceed, so unless the guys save this a million and a half somewhere, you're going to have to do a change order.
Yeah, we would have to do a change order, which would have to be approved.
Okay.
All right. I will entertain a motion to approve Action Item Ten B as presented.
Motion to approve.
Mr. West from second. Any further discussion?
Second.
Mr. Matthew Slaton with second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
All right. Uh, so this time around, we've got our material testing and inspection services back in front of you and we're looking for a not to exceed for two-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars. And this is a required code requirement that we test materials, concrete, earthwork densities, masonry, structural steel inspections, just to ensure that it's all built in compliance with codes and safe.
Do you want to have any questions?
Mr. Slaton, I'll be recusing myself from this.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Matthew Slaton is recusing himself from voting on this action item. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve Action Item Ten C as presented.
It's removed.
Mr. Hawxworth, motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. West from second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I haven't seen them all night.
Okay, well, I will take this item then. Okay, so, uh, this is the Bond Oversight Committee charge. Chair Josh Combs has worked on this, worked on this with the Bond Oversight Committee starting back, I think, in May, June and has made just a few adjustments. Basically, you know, we had a twenty-two bond and of course now we have a twenty-five bond. So, it was time to revise this a little bit and he and the committee have worked on this and have a recommendation here with the red lines, which would add the new bond program, which was the May twenty twenty-five bond. Um, so you'll see that changed there. And then they had a committee, will be comprised of ten to twenty community members and no more than three school board members, which is currently what we have, serving on, on that committee. And then the remaining co-chair will be appointed by the elected co-chair, so they made that adjustment there. And then the final adjustment was originally the no member shall have a conflict of interest. The committee wanted to say any member with a conflict of interest with any of the bond programs shall notify the committee chair and recuse from any advice because they're not a decision-making committee. They are just an advisory committee. Um, and so that would be their recommendation changed there.
Do you want to have any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve Action Item Ten D as presented.
Motion to approve.
Mr. West from motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Rich McDowell with a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Uh, the time is seven forty-two P.M. We are going to adjourn to executive session. When we come back to close for the evening, there will be no further action taken. Y'all have a good evening. Thank you.